So we will call the Kent Sustainability Team special meeting on January 14th to order. And I'm just going to make a motion. So we called to order at 3:42. And I will make a motion to approve the minutes from the December 10th meeting.
And I will second it.
Fantastic. All those in favor? Hi. I did see June Wee. She logged in a couple of times, but her audio wasn't connecting.
Oh, okay.
I don't know if maybe she was having issues with her computer. It would be great to have her come back. Um, next item is the discussion of any actions or activity. Anybody's undertaken since the last meeting? I have not. I did have a really good conversation with the Conservation Commission last night about their pollinator pathway work that they do with the Kent Land Trust. And there's actually a really good meeting Connie had. She sort of explained how she's really wants goals of the board or the commission to be them taking action. And it was very inspiring to me.
Oh, good.
So, so we talked about pollinator pathways and I'm, I'm very hopeful and feeling very positive that we're the town. So the town is going to sign on to the program and then we're hoping to somehow be able to with funds and, you know, hopefully probably donations, but be able to put a pollinator pathway. I'm, I'm pointing, you have no idea where I'm pointing to. Put a pollinator pathway in the back of the building. Somewhere, there's actually a, a, a big swath back there that I think would be perfect. It's sort of up a little berm. And I talked to the garden club and they were very excited. So I think that, and that's one of the, that's an action item with
Right.
in the big grand scheme of things. So continue to, you know, work that through into the spring. When hopefully we can get something designed and, and I'm sure, you know, there's so many local people who volunteer so much expertise. I'm sure we'll be able to find somebody to design this a little space back there without any.
Yeah. Yeah, that sounds great. Um, I also wonder, so with like the sidewalks. I guess there's really not space where sidewalks and roads. Any sort of small, small earthen place where you could also do like a pollinator pathway?
That's a really good idea. We should talk to Melissa Cherniski. She's such a great advocate for this. As far as, you know, if there are any spaces along the way.
Yeah.
Would we get pollinators to come to Main Street? Or is it too like loud and crowded for them? I don't know. But that's a great idea.
I mean, we do it in like cities and all. It's more just finding the plants that they like, I think.
Right.
But it just
That's a great idea.
Having a, even just like a small strip of it or something and have it really visible too would be kind of cool.
Yeah. Yeah, that would be cool.
Um, and then, let me just and who did you say we should talk to about that?
Cherniski. Probably Melissa Cherniski. Yeah, she's a member of the Conservation Commission and also works with, works for the land trust and the land trust has been a big, big advocate of the whole pollinator pathway.
Yeah, yeah. And I think also even doing like some kind of educational thing.
They're gonna do that.
Yeah, so that people for plant, you know, because I, I want to know for my own yard, what I can be.
So I, I think they just had something. I'll actually look it up for you.
Land Trust?
It was virtual.
And I Right, but who did it?
It might've been through the library, but there was a, a speaker and he talked about pollinator pathways and you can look on the library website probably. But apparently they had a lot of participants in that. And another thing they were, the Conservation Commission was talking about was, I guess the Kent Greenhouse in the spring, they actually have a section. That's, that is pollinator pathway plants. So you can sort of shop that collection, I guess. And they were talking about in this education process of including that and working with the, the greenhouse to sort of spread the word about, about all the native plants that you can put in by having them all in one section of the greenhouse, which is super cool.
Yeah, that's great. Because that's what I'm always on the lookout for, just native things. And I'm, I'm working with a guy gardener, but he's just a cool guy who has been just showing, I don't know if you know him, Rio? Yeah. Yeah, he's just, he's a young guy who's just really into making things more like they should be. Native plants. You know, he's, he's trying to help me just do less mowing on the property. Like, he's like, you could let that go to Meadow there and these are the plants you can put in the pond to help like the fish hide and it's like a whole ecosystem that kind of thrives together rather than, you know, fertilizer and mowing and stuff.
Right. Yeah, we did that probably 10 or 15 years ago. We have a, there's a big field at the south end and then there's a big field at the north end and we actually took both of them and let them go, did a bunch of wildflower planting, but you know, the, the native stuff takes over and we just mow a path around. The one on the north end is just a path around the edge and then the one on the south end, which is probably twice as big. We were doing, I think, two access points because there's a humongous apple tree. And that was mostly for the dogs to keep the tick population down.
Right, yeah, yeah.
But boy, was it nice not to have to mow them.
Yeah, no, that's what he was saying, like beyond our pond. He's like, you could just let that go to Meadow. And I was like, oh, that'd be nice with cars and all. I mean, we don't have a ton of property, but just to let, you know, just keeping grass right close to the house instead.
Right. And they, so the, the person who did the program, the Zoom program, one of the Conservation Commission members mentioned his, his whole sort of baseline is mow places that you walk. Like the concept of
Yeah.
What do you let go and what do you not let go? And his whole concept was mow the places that you walk and do other things with the places where you don't. And I was like, that's so genius. Absolute perfect sense.
Yeah. So I wonder, I mean, I'm just thinking about with the pollinator education, it would be good to do it again, especially like planting season.
Yeah, that's what they're planning to do.
Yeah, okay, cool.
I'm sure in the next couple of months, we'll hear a lot more.
Yeah. Yeah. Now, would you want to follow up with Melissa Cherniski or you want me to?
Yeah, I can follow up with her.
Okay. Hold on, let me, I just have to get out of a few things here popping up on my. Okay, all right. Just all this and everything's just started popping up on my.
Oh, yeah. It's embarrassing how many things I have opened at one time during.
Um, and then, so is that, I, I, I haven't really done much of anything. I tried to, I got in touch with the school to try to be part of the PTA meeting or PTO meeting in December. And she told me that the person who was that, the president or the chair had just stepped down.
Oh, so they're going through a change.
So I just, she said, but I'll give you the email. It goes to their account. So I emailed and then didn't hear anything. So I looked up for this month to try to see when their PTA meeting was, and I didn't even see it on the calendar. So I'm not, I'm not really sure what, you know, I, I may, I might get in touch with, um, with Michelle Mott and just do that.
Going to say, yeah, just shoot her an email. She can probably give you some insight or direction.
Yeah. Yeah, but just trying to work, you know, to get together a round table. I'm also, I actually just got hired by the, the woman who's opening the studio in Kent.
Oh, no kidding?
Yeah. Yeah. So I'm
I just read about that last night.
Right. She's great. She's fantastic. And so I'm going to be working as the manager for community and schools. So, yeah, so that would, I mean, that's going to be an amazing space, I think, to try to do some of these youth programs and just, she's really into doing multi-generational things. I think it'll, it'll start with like children's classes and all, but I think she'll definitely work with us to.
Yeah, it sounds like they'll be like a fantastic partner for this.
Yeah, absolutely. So I think, you know, and, and then also through that, I might start meeting some more parents.
Absolutely.
Hard when you don't have your own kids.
Right, right.
And especially COVID too. I didn't want to like go into the school. I mean, ideally, I would like walk into the school and talk to people, but then all of a sudden with this Omicron, I'm like, they're not going to want extra people in the school. And I don't, I don't know how I feel about it, but it's just, doesn't seem polite at this point.
Yeah, I think, um, I think they don't have visitors coming in. But that's a great, that's going to be a huge sort of pathway and connector to a lot.
Yeah, yeah. No, and I think she's, you know, she's young with her own young child and really tapped into the, you know, just like what young parents want for their kids. So I think, I think it'll be really good.
That's great. Now, are they, do they live in Kent?
She doesn't. No, they live in, um, Wingdale.
Okay, that's just right over there.
And it was funny because I said to her when, when I first, because I got in touch with her when I, she had put something on Facebook. It says, so why Kent? And she said, well, you know, I looked at Pauling and Pauling seems like it's a dying town and Kent seems like it's a lively town. So and let's make it more lively. So she's very much like, you know, she wants to bring vitality to Kent and, and really, because I think Wingdale doesn't really have any sort of center.
Yeah, I don't think so.
Yeah. So, um, yeah. So she seems pretty invested in, in Kent.
Awesome, awesome.
Yeah, yeah. And I, I just talked to, to John Casey, who's, who's the landlord and he was just they're just, they've been lovely to work with and everything. So
Oh, great. Yeah, that's awesome. So that's fantastic.
Yeah. So I think it's all good.
Super. So the next item is work on completing paperwork for the Community Resilience Building Workshop. And so I did start to take a stab at that and and I did, so we have a hazard mitigation plan that we're, the town is required to do and the COG, so the Council of Governments. They assisted with that. It's a huge plan and there's a bunch of questions that feed from hazard mitigation. And so that was where I was sort of getting into. But if we want to maybe make a decision to, so it's just before four now, maybe take a look at the, the rest of the survey, try to hack away at it a little bit.
Yeah.
For the next like 20, do 20 minutes or if we're in 20 minutes and we say, let's go another 10 and we'll do a full half hour. And so we can do that if you want.
Sure, sure. Um, I, I also, just before I forget, I talked to Donna about the P O C D. And I, I emailed it to you guys, but I can't, I can't remember offhand. But basically, I think it's September that they cannot make any more changes.
After September?
I, I believe that's what it is. I have to, I have to check back to my email that I sent. But it was, so she, she was kind of saying, you know, they're writing it now. We need to like get in there if we want to have any, you know, if we want this report to be part of it. They, they need it sooner rather than later.
Okay.
Basically the download. I'm just, I'm just looking up here.
Yeah, I'm looking for the email.
Yeah, it'll be completely written by September and no changes can be made after that because they start a public hearing. So once, and then it's, I guess it's all confirmed by, you know, the end of the year, but once, once the public meeting, the public hearing starts, they're not going to do changes to it.
Okay.
So basically, yeah, the sooner the better to.
Okay, yeah. And once we, I think probably once we get our, this survey submitted back to Adam and then get the dates for the community workshops. Maybe we can target, so P and Z had their meeting for January. Last night, maybe we can target, have a goal of getting on P and Z's agenda for February.
Okay.
Do a, you know, brief presentation. And a, just to tell them, here's the process that we're in. Here's, you know, the, what we'll get from the report. And we'd really like the report to be part of the, an annex.
Right. Or, you know, just that they can use it.
Right, 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 right. Yeah, not, not tell them because we're not going to tell them what to do with their, how to build their P O C D. But yeah, that's exactly right. Just for it up to them to help them with their process.
Okay, yeah.
And I think that's reasonable. That's, that gives us a solid month to get all these little pieces figured out.
All right.
We do want to make sure, just as a, maybe an action item on the minutes to in the next, probably by, let me see here, open my calendar. So the next P and Z would be the February 10th. So I would say probably by the 27th, we should, Leanna would want to make sure that she reaches out to P and Z to say, hey, this is what we're doing. This is our, so that may mean we might need a week, a meeting in another week and a half. Just to solidify the sort of timeline.
Okay.
And then, and then Leanna can go to pitch to the P and Z. We have some, you know, this thing that we're doing and we'd love to just present it five minutes and talk to you at your February meeting, just so that they have plenty of hands up.
Do you think, um, it would be wise to have like Adam or someone else from
Yes.
actually doing it to
Yeah.
at that meeting, at the P and Z meeting?
Yep. I bet, I'm sure he's done plenty of them.
Right. Yeah, that's what I would say. Because he seems to really know what he's talking about.
Yes, for sure.
Yeah.
Alrighty, I'm going to screen share. And we can get down to this. Ready? So these are just what I've put in so far. It's very basic. This is from the 2010 census. One of the questions was, how do you describe your municipality when you are asked by folks from elsewhere in Connecticut? And that was sort of, I was trying not to overthink this. All, any, any of these. But if we want to tweak anything, by all means, let's tweak away. So that was the, just the brief answer for that one. What are the most important influential institutions, organizations or businesses? And just from, and, and again, I was trying to really break it down. So important or influential institutions, those are three big employers. High watch and, you know, I should say also that high watch provides, you know, a service to, you know, people who need it. That is very important.
Yeah.
Service and recovery. And then obviously, the whole swath of Main Street. That's our economic vitality.
I would maybe add our businesses. I mean, restaurants are included in businesses, but maybe just even say the businesses in restaurants. Because sometimes when I think of businesses, I kind of think more shops.
Yes. That's a good, good ad for sure.
And then I also say we're a small rural community with a mix of long time, full time. Yeah.
I'm, I'm open to anything. I am.
Right. I mean, I feel like we do have this whole demographic of like, yeah, like people from, from a long time ago who've lived here, plus a lot of people that even live here full time, but they're, they're newcomers or, you know, from other places. Which is kind of interesting, you know? I, I feel like that's what I always tell people. There's, and I, I don't think we want to call them old timers, but you know.
I know. And that was why I picked the
time. Yeah. But I mean, I feel like it just needs to be fleshed out a little bit.
Yeah, I agree.
Because it says, and part-time residents. So it's like either people who've been here forever and then part-time, but there's also that in between of like, you know, newer residents that have been here for a shorter time. Longstanding families or
Yeah, I guess I was thinking about it in sort of a like long time or, yeah, it's, the syntax of the words is sort of muddies it up. But in my mind, I was thinking people who, who have been either coming here for a long time or have lived here for a long time. I guess that was what I was, comma separated list, then long time, full time and then part-time. It was the part-time folks have been here, many of them have been here for decades and decades. And how we end up with full-time residents is they have come here, bought a second home and then converted. But it's a little bit different now. And I do feel like I, that needs to get fleshed out some more.
Right. A mix of residents, which includes, you know, includes people, I, I don't know, I'm not really phrasing this very well, includes people who've been here. They're a small rural community with a mix of rhythm. That includes,
or you know, maybe it will help for me to just take that out. So we're not looking at it.
Yeah. The mix of presence that includes, old, old people. People, old timers, new timers, newcomers of, of old and new. I, I, I feel like saying something old and new, but it's not old people and young people. It's a
Yeah, and our demo, so our age demographic is definitely on the, the
older.
The older end.
Yeah.
And I, so I kept going back to what's the, what, what's the question that we're trying to answer? So when, you know, if you're in, you know, you're standing here in town and you see somebody outside the coffee shop and they ask for directions and you say, oh, you're, you know, are you visiting? And they say, yes. And they say, tell me about Kent.
Right.
So what, like, that's the question that I think about here.
Mix of residents that include.
And maybe, you know, maybe like this is where we start from.
Yeah, yeah.
Maybe going to the like who, you know, the specifics of who is too far in the weeds yet. So we know we're small, we know we're rural. What are other things? And if, so just from a wordsmithing, what are other words that come to mind?
You know, like New England, you know, as a newcomer, I feel like that's sort of very specific for me to think of it is, it's a small rural New England community. Because it's really
And I'm just going to sort of put in
Right, right.
Just some tag words and then we can
And then we can rearrange and yeah.
Make it a, a description.
So like, yeah, like a small rural New England community that includes long time residents. As well as, you know, newcomers and and part-time. Part-time visitors or it's gotten so windy outside.
It is getting really, really windy. It's going to be brutal tomorrow. Yeah, I'm, I'm, my house is the same way. My house is very old as well. So another sort of tag word that comes to mind for me is that volunteer. Like, we're very rich in our volunteer time. But then how do you, how is that a descriptor?
Yeah, like
Very nature-based. We're very, you know, that's part of our, the, what draws people and what really attracts folks to come here in the first place.
Right, right. And I mean, we don't have to really keep this to like one sentence either.
Right, right.
So, you know, a small rural, New England community with long time residents, newcomers, both full-time and part-time, period. And then you could say, you know, there's a, there's a large focus on nature and, and our natural resources. Our natural resources are a focal point for for residents and visitors alike. Yeah, you don't even have to have the alike. You could just have residents and visitors. I like to speak with lots of extra words.
Thank goodness for Microsoft Word. I, I found a roll of 35 millimeter film the other day.
Oh, wow.
Somewhere. And I sat there, it just sort of brought me back to days of doing a lot of photography when I was in college and
And was developing it.
Oh, yeah. But even being behind the lens and you're way more thoughtful. You know, I would, you know, it'd be, you know, a few minutes to that decision-making tree of taking a photograph where it was a much more, you know, you had more investment because you were like, oh, now I only have 34 frames left.
Right, exactly. Yeah, this, this is a small roll of film.
Yeah, it's just funny thinking like now it's like you know, I go to find a picture and I'm like, oh my goodness gracious, I have so many photographs.
Oh, and I just keep running out of space. And then I'm just like, no, I refuse to buy more space. I just have to call.
Right, right. Um, so you know what? Why don't we keep moving and we'll know that we have to come back to this. And you know what? I'm actually going to make this red so that we know that we're not done with this.
Yeah, I think that sounds good as far as number four.
Okay. Um, this one, I, you know, I, it, it's hard because there's, there's so many things. And right now, everything is, you know, in, through this lens of the pandemic.
Right. I mean, you're definitely more in
In the weeds.
Yeah, well, I mean, I was gonna say.
That's fair. That's completely fair.
Finger on the pulse of what these hot issues are. I'm probably oblivious because
No, I think we all have good things to.
I'm in my house. But uh.
So we can, and you know, we don't have to like.
I think.
Hammer on each one of these if you don't want to.
I definitely think housing is a huge issue. Um, as we've seen with this development proposal. As well as, yeah, like housing is not affordable. There's disagreement on what housing should be built, how it should be built, um, where it should be built.
Sure.
Yeah, I, I feel like definitely. And then economic vitality, I, I don't know that much about the economic vitality of Kent.
Yeah, so when it comes to, so when I think of economic vitality, it's really mainly focused on, you know, the downtown area and you know, it's, it can, you know, looking at it, seeing an empty storefront, obviously, we never want to see empty storefronts, but we have some and you know, just me internally worrying and sort of thinking about, well, how do we get those filled or why, you know, why has some, you know, someplace, why has Zepa? So there used to be a really great pottery ceramics place at the end of the loop. Um, at the Kent Town Center and I still have my main cookie jar in my kitchen is from them. And they were very famous. They had, it was a, what made them famous were they had a, um, it was a sort of drawing of a chocolate lab and then they did a, a, I'm sorry, a black lab and then they did chocolate lab and a yellow lab. But it was, um, and it was on a mug. I still have the mug and it said, um, it was like turning a Labrador Retriever, the words into Latin. And underneath, so it said, you know, Labradoris Retriverus and then it said, eatamis maximus or something like that. And they, it, that sort of made a name for them. And they were there forever. We all thought they would be there forever. They ended up, I think with online, it, they, you know, changed their model and then they were gone. But so that has sat empty for quite some time and that, you know, that worries me. You know, we want to see somebody in there. I'm so excited to see that studio coming in.
Yeah.
So making, you know, that, making sure that we're that, that we're employing people, right? You want.
Right.
Small business is, is our bread and butter here. It's always gonna be our bread and butter here.
Right, right.
How do we um, keep the small businesses and how do we attract more small businesses? Is sort of that, what I think of in the bucket of economic vitality.
Yeah, and I think, you know, part of it too is just once you have one place, it starts attracting other ones.
Yep.
You know, and I think, I think Wilson's has been like a great, great addition.
They have.
And even the bookstore moving over, I mean, it was great before, but having just a big bookstore and a coffee shop right next to each other.
Right, having them complete and them back in there, not the sort of construction.
And I, I think that definitely helps to feel like, okay, this is looking very cool and, and and clean and fresh and.
Yeah.
That's part of it too, is kind of.
And busy and.
Places fresh.
Yeah. And I don't know if you went in the pop-up shop that's in, in the previous bookstore. Harry, um, oh, I'm trying to remember her last name. Anyway. I've been in there a couple of times and she, the landlords for that whole complex worked with her and were great to allow her to have that pop-up shop.
Right, right.
Have that Main Street experience. And she said, I didn't realize what it, what everybody was talking about until I had this pop-up shop and she was like, I get it.
Yeah.
Really enjoyed being in that space.
Right, right. And she can't stay in that space?
Um, I think that she's, um, that her, you know, permanent spaces in the barns in the back.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's what she said. She was, she wasn't permanent there, but I.
Right.
Sure. Why?
And that, you know, that, that also supports that whole economic vitality when you've got, you know, that's a little bit of a fresh or creative way to.
Right.
In that space and that's a shop that's open, that's a place for people to go, that's a place when people are walking by, they look and they say, that's an open place that I'm gonna go in kind of thing.
I was.
So that's the, the bigger picture stuff.
Is there, you know, cause it's interesting, cause a lot of, I feel like Wilson's is definitely the people, the full-timers here can use it. I feel like some of the other stuff is maybe more geared towards visitors and, and tourists. Um, and I think like having a balance where it's things that, you know, people who are here all the time are gonna go and use it and go there. Um, you know, like a fife and drum. Which is, you know, it seems like everyone goes there. And it's not just full when, you know, the summer visitors are here. And I feel like the art studio will be that, you know, that it can be for the people who are here all the time.
Not viable, attractive, um, welcoming. I'm not sure what that word is.
Right, welcoming for both visitors and residents. Good, yeah, sounds good.
Alright, so we'll keep going. I'm gonna make that one red so we know the comeback, come back to it. And again, this was, I often will just put in words that are coming to my mind and then come back and turn them into a a sentence or not.
Yeah. I, I mean, I feel like the ongoing COVID is just obvious.
Right.
Like, right.
Transportation, so we have.
What's the transportation one?
So, um, we have no public transportation.
Oh, okay, the lack of.
Yeah, a hundred years ago, we had a single, what was that bus? It was a coach bus that came through. For, the fife and drum was the, the bus stop for it. And it, you know, it was north and south on Route Seven. You could take a bus all the way up to, um, oh, no, to Vermont.
Oh.
It was a proper big coach bus.
It was a real bus. It wasn't like a little Sydney kind of thing.
It wasn't, I don't think it was Bluebird. Oh, I wish I could remember the name of it. Anyway, so, um, you know, that, it provided transportation through the town of Kent. Um, there's also, we have a lot of um, seniors who are looking to, you know, whether you want to go shopping in Milford or in Torrington, there is some of that senior um, transportation, but we, we need to do better at it. Um, and I think now that we're gonna have, we have a park and rec director that's been hired. We have an interim social services director that's gonna, you know, um, bridge that gap between um, Leah, who's her last days today and whomever gets hired for the permanent position. Um, that's gonna be something that those two positions will hopefully be able to give some focus to. And then obviously economic development to, you know, bring more businesses to town. And not only the, you know, the businesses on Main Street, but businesses, you know, where people are hanging a shingle in their home. Obviously, we've seen what's happened in the last two years that you know, being able to start up a business in your own kitchen, in your own living room is, you know, a pretty doable thing.
Right, yeah.
You know what else might be a good thing to add to this is broadband and connectivity. May go in a different place, but I'm gonna put it here just to.
Right.
Just so that we almost sort of like a place marker.
Right.
We don't have a lot of um, stormwater surface runoff issues. Um, that's more of a suburban, urban challenge. And I'd like to ask Adam about the development and redevelopment question. Just, I think that's more of a suburban, suburban, urban topic as well.
Yeah. Yeah, um, what about like flooding though?
So, yeah.
I know in the past I wasn't here, but yeah, I was, I was just running there this morning and seeing the ice all build up and piling up on top of each other.
Yeah, um, yeah, I think that that's, this is a good place. And also I forgot, um, primary care.
Oh, right, yeah.
And hospital.
So what, what's going on with Sharon Hospital? I know they're not doing like the, um, what the, um, the.
Labor and delivery. Yeah, they're.
Whatever you call it.
Yeah, their intention is to close the birthing center.
Right, but are they? But are they gonna close the rest of it as well?
I hope not.
Okay, so that's not the works. It's just the birthing center. I'd heard about that, okay.
Yeah, there, the number of births that happen at Sharon Hospital have gone down over the years. There's, there's a lot of controversy and a lot of conversation about that closure.
Yeah.
But it, you know, I, coming from a public health background, I running a hospital's gotta be really, really difficult in this day and age with the cost of, you know, the cost of, of providing healthcare in this country and
Right.
You know, the funding and the, um, the reimbursement rates, you know, it's, it's a whole
Yeah.
Bit of a hot mess. So this was my answer for this, which other municipalities you routinely partner with. And we have a very robust cog. And I'm very grateful for the very robust cog. And there's a number of initiatives that we come together. So the cog gets various grants because we don't have county government per se, even though there are eight counties. Really, those counties don't like, when you go down into Virginia, everything is run by county government. Anywhere sort of out of New England, everything is really focused on um, county government. So the cogs function that way largely and um, we have a great, great relationship with the cog, which affords us a really great relationship with twenty-one towns. So it's sort of this bonus. Um, and so they get, the cog gets money and then the cog member towns will often come together. And, you know, depending on what that grant might be for, one of the towns may say, yeah, you know what? We're gonna, we would, we'll take that project on, like, um, right now. While in the past couple of years, Torrington um, took on a big project to create a regional, and this was through some grant funding, a regional, um, uh, animal shelter facility. And while we have ours, um, here in town and most of the other, many of the other towns have um, also similar, very small facility, many of them don't. And so to be able to have Torrington, which obviously has that huge population and a much bigger need for something like that. So they have the physical plant, they would take on maintenance. Um, and we, by coming together and saying, yes, we're all gonna sign on to Torrington, getting the funding for that regional center. It, it helps everybody in a much bigger way and everything that if you ever talk to anybody who does, um, manages grants, everything that's coming from the feds is regional, regional, regional. They, they, I just sat on a webinar yesterday about, um, it was the CCM Legislative Committee and they were talking about the infrastructure bill that just passed and the ARPA money and it's everything that's kind of come down through the state from the feds. They are pushing for regional, you're more likely to be awarded a grant if you are coming together.
Yeah, that makes sense.
It really does. So that's that. That was a simple answer. This was sort of where I went over and down a rabbit hole into the hazard mitigation um, plan, which I will, I'm gonna just pull it up quick just to show you. Gotta undo my screen share and then start it again. To her somewhere. It's really getting lustr-y out there.
It's gonna be worse tomorrow, I think.
Yeah. Alright, found it. Okay, so. This is our, this is our annex. So there's a much bigger plan that covers every town. But specific for our town, we have a tidy little sixty-five page annex and we won't go into too much detail. But this is sort of what, um, this hazard mitigation plan addresses. So it's every kind of hazard from climate change to flooding to hurricanes, tornadoes, winter storms, earthquakes, dam failure. You name it, you can see the whole list here.
Right, and how, when was this? What's the date of this or how?
So this is brand new. So we have to do this, I think, every five years. And so this goes up to FEMA and, um, we actually, we have to do this by law, but it also allows us to apply for certain grants.
Right.
It's deliverable when you're applying for, um, some grants. Is that you have to have a hazard mitigation plan. And we should have a hazard mitigation.
Yeah.
You need to spend time thinking about all the different hazards that are in your town and um, how would you respond? How would you mitigate?
Yeah.
Various different.
Yeah, like every five years makes sense, but.
I think it's every five years.
Changing, you know, the hazards probably are changing.
Yeah, so in our, like our local emergency operations plan, we, and that's also what's called an all hazards plan. So it deals with everything for the town. They, um, Homeland Emergency Management at the state level is now, um, they've added an annex for pandemic.
Right, yeah.
That we now have to write a pandemic insert. They've given us some where we can get grant money for it. So I'm, I would, I would be surprised if they didn't add a, um, pandemic annex. Um, or a pandemic section to our next round of for hazard mitigation, like a public health kind of.
Right, yeah, exactly.
So that's that and, um, this, um, report, this, um, plan is sort of that next, I'm gonna pull up the other one again.
Is that available online, the plan?
Um, because we're still getting, um, we're at the final stage of, um, approval for, from FEMA. Once we get that, then we'll put it up on the website. I think, I have to check, there's some plans, um, some of these hazard plans are suppressed or redacted because they can be security.
Right, yeah.
You know, if, if some not nice person got hold of it, they could.
They would know your plan.
Right, so I'm not sure if the hazard mitigation plan is a, um,
Right.
Document, but I'll check. Um, so once that's done, um, then we can probably share all or some of it. I I think the whole thing is, um, publicly available.
Yeah, we're just curious.
So a lot of these, this next bowls of questions deal with that. So I often, I need to have that plan up on one screen and then answer those questions. up on one screen and then answer those questions. So yeah, this is all all from the hazard mitigation plan. And this should go pretty quickly, once I am able to sit in front of that.
Right, yeah, because the answers are just gonna be in there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's almost like an open book test. Um, this is the same, all of this is gonna be in there, all of this is gonna be in there. Let me make this a little bit smaller, we can see. That's probably a little bit small for you, isn't it?
A little bit.
Trying to get two pages.
Yeah, I can, I can-
Can you see a little bit more? Ah, shoot. There we go. Um, yeah, this is all hazard mitigation, so, um, I just need to sit down. I might have time this weekend to get this all fleshed out. And then I'll put it up on Google Drive and, um, share it to the group, although it's not that big of a document, I can just send email it out for review, and then maybe, maybe we should have a meeting in another two weeks. And maybe we do it with Adam. And we can talk about what we want to, um, how we want to move forward to talk to P and Z and get the, the next phase of this
Right.
object moving along. So I can flesh out, I'll come off-screen share. The rest of that, I'll, I'll do a little bit more work on the, those top questions, and then I'll send a draft out to the group and include Adam in the-
And I think, were we also supposed to be thinking about, like, invitations for the workshop? Like, who would be included? I thought that was part of it, you know, just thinking about who the stakeholders are in this thing.
Yeah, so on the agenda, work on completing paperwork for Community Resilience Building Workshop, offered by Nature Conservancy. Yeah, and I, so I think that this agenda item really was specific to the survey. And you have the, the stuff that came from Adam, right?
Right, yeah.
So maybe we should be all working on sort of a draft list of stakeholders in the background.
I just feel like if we're including Adam in the next meeting, we should maybe be prepared with who we think is gonna attend this workshop.
Yeah, that sounds like a good idea.
Important to attend it, okay. And, um, I guess we're gonna do the workshop virtually?
At this point, yeah.
Yeah.
It's all, I mean, it's still, it changes all the time, and I'm hoping it, you know, we're, we'll get done with this wave and-
Right, but I also think, you know, Leanna had a point where a lot of people have left for warmer climes that it would allow them to, to be-
Yeah, this is the ultimate flexibility.
If they are, yeah.
It really is.
Yeah.
And I imagine that Adam, you know, he's been doing enough of these throughout the pandemic that he's got this, you know-
Oh, yeah.
How to run them.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, I think it's, yeah, I think it's fine online. It's just nice to get together, but, you know. It'll be fine.
The next item is discuss ways to increase membership on the Sustainability Team. So I can-
Where we go on? Should we make a date for this meeting in two weeks? Should we say, like, Friday? Weeks?
We can absolutely make a try. So that is the 28th. I'm actually, in theory, not gonna be here that weekend, that, that day. For the first time in two years, I'm actually gonna go gather with my husband's family. I know, but, but we may not. We, it all may be out the window.
Right, I know.
We could do the 27th, we could do-
Yeah, the 27th.
So the, that Thursday, I'm hopefully not jinxing myself, but I'm wide open on that Thursday. It's a solid, you know, almost two weeks.
Okay.
And the survey is, you know, very close. It'll be a couple more hours, just going back and forth. Just learning the rest of that stuff.
Right, I think that's good. Um, so yeah, let's just do tentatively Thursday, the 27th. Should we leave it like 3:30, just-
Yeah.
For consistency?
Yeah.
And then we can see if Adam can maybe attend. If not, we might change it if he has a conflict.
Okay, sounds good.
Um, and I guess Leanna will reach out to Adam?
Yeah, I think once you get the minutes out to her and just, maybe in your email, just say, "Here's some action items."
Yeah. Okay, so increase membership.
So maybe, um, I wonder if we're at the point where enough of this is gelling. We have this big project in the pipeline that we, it might, we might be able to go back to conservation and say, and I did report on this last night, um, on the, the resiliency very briefly, because I had 25 other things going on. I had just come in from outside, I think, um, from the distribution.
Oh, right, yeah.
No, maybe that was, this was Wednesday when they had their meeting. Today's Friday. I was, there was something else on fire that I had just put water on. But anyway, I did go. So maybe, um, maybe, maybe we can get somebody from Conservation Commission to join. And I think maybe we can, maybe we want to reach out to Jessica at Sustainable CT again, and me, and Leanna maybe can pick her brain to get from her, you know, what, what are good ways to help the public understand, you know, in a simplified way, and get them excited about coming and, you know, helping us eat this very, very large donut, one tiny bite at a time.
Yeah, um, I think also, I mean, yeah, like, now that we're kind of working on a few things, we could, you know, even, I, I knew you've sent out in the beginning, looking for members. Yeah, but it was-
We can definitely do another-
Unclear what
Right.
it was.
Yeah, very immediate at that point.
Well, because like, yeah, it was so large and, and all, but you know, now it could be like a little more, you know, like
Focus.
focused, and, you know, maybe even just do like a little PR.
Right.
You know, are you interested in
Right.
youth art?
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Are you interested in, you know, pollinator pathways and, you know, please join us on the Kent Sustainability Team?
Let me see what I can come up with
We could even-
For the next meeting.
Okay, yeah, um, and we could even do like something on Facebook as well.
Yeah, yep.
And even like, I mean, I could even work on like a little graphic or something that would just kind of catch, catch your eye.
Yeah, I, um, I spend a fair amount of my late evenings in Canva creating, you know, graphics and just content.
Right. So yeah, if you want to make something, absolutely.
Yeah, and I, there's a couple of things. I'm going back to the, right, we picked four. I'll go back to the minutes, um, and just pick up on those four, I think it was four target areas, and build on that.
Yeah.
Okay.
And, and I mean, you could even, yeah, I'm trying to think like how they get in touch, too. You know, like, you don't, you don't necessarily want to take all of it. You, you know, you could say like youth arts, Joanne Wasty, or, you know, floatable housing, Leanna.
Okay.
Or, you know, split it up a little bit, too. But yeah, like, I think, I think maybe just try to make it sound exciting, because I think, you know, I think especially, I mean, I get excited about doing like action items and, and things we can actually do.
Yeah, yeah. And this is like fun thinking.
Yeah, yeah. And, and it is, it is.
Exciting and positive, and I'm not talking about, you know, how many thousands of masks and, you know.
Budget, or people are disgruntled about this, and how do you solve that? It's, yeah, it's like something positive for the town.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's, that's good.
All right, let me see what I can come up with. Notes. Determine a date and time for the next meeting. I think we sort of have arrived at that.
What, I'll just write it down at the calendar.
We're thinking of the 27th, right?
Right, the 27th, that would be in between, but our next
Monthlys.
Our monthly would be the 11th, February 11th.
Um, yep.
Yeah. All right.
And I think that's it. Got to the bottom of our agenda.
Yeah, there you go. I mean, you're the bulk of the work with that survey, so.
I really think, once I get the hazard mitigation survey up on one screen and this-
I was gonna say, I wish I could help you, but I just, you know so much more than I do with that, so.
Well, no, we just know different things.
Well, about Kent, you know a whole lot more, a whole lot more.
And I've gone through, so when we were working with the consultant on the hazard mitigation plan, we were meeting with them, we met with them a whole bunch, so I've have eyes on that plan as it was developing. So I, once I get it in front of me, I'm gonna be like, "Oh, yep, I know where that is," and I'll, I'll just be able to zip around and fill in the rest of those.
Right, okay. All right, that sounds good.
Alrighty, well, stay warm.
Yeah, you too. Hope the wind doesn't get to you.
Yeah, I'm on ambulance call tonight, which
Oh.
I'm, um, not looking forward to. I mean, not that I'm not looking forward to it, just being out in the, those, these kinds of elements always adds a whole nother
Yeah.
year of, you know, if we have something that's an outside something, and just making sure that you, you know, you're prepared. I always lay out everything on Friday evening when I get home, so that, um, I don't have to think about it in the moment, right?
Right, yeah, yeah, no.
It's that all hazards approach.
I was gonna say, this-
First level.
Weather can be like dangerous if you're out in it too long, yeah.
Yeah. They actually were saying, one of the things that we got this afternoon, it was like 10 to 30 minutes out in this weather that's coming tomorrow morning and cause frostbite.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's crazy. It's crazy, yeah.
For the road guys, the road crew.
Coming from the city, like, you know, you don't put a sleeping bag in your car.
Right.
If your car breaks down, you get on the subway.
Right.
Just like, and so I was, I was listening to something about how, you know, in this kind of weather, you should have some food. Oh, oh, I was reading about that, you know, that traffic jam in Virginia. Where people stuck for 24 hours and cold, and it was just about, you know, and I was thinking, gosh, you know, I never think about, when I drive around here, that you, you know, half the time I don't even have very good shoes on.
Right. Well, it's so funny, because, you know, raising two kids here, you know, you're, you teach them, you know, always go out with a coat on, and as they started to get older and more autonomous, Sharon was probably 13, and I started giving them, one year for Christmas, I gave them a soft-sided Zip clothes little toolbox that had nothing in it except a flashlight, and then every year I would add on to it, and there was a, like, every other year there was a flashlight, and so they probably have, you know, five flashlights in their cars, and they used to make fun of me, and just recently, Sharon and a couple of her friends were going somewhere, and Sharon actually said, "Where are your coats?"
Yeah.
And I was like-
You taught her well.
And, and she, and they were like, like, "What's the big deal?" And she was like, "If the car, if we crash," she was the whole thing, and she was like, "Oh my God, this totally makes sense to me now." She looked at me and said that, and I was like-
And she probably thought to herself, "Oh my God, I'm turning into my mom."
Yes, yes.
Like we all do.
Right, like we all do, every one of us.
All right, well, stay warm out there.
Yes, you too.
And I'll, I'll send out the minutes. I hope Leanna's fine.
Yeah, me too.
Um, and I'll, yeah, I'll email her.
Okay, fantastic. Have a good weekend.
Um, you too.
All right.
See you. Bye.